All right. Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monroe City Council meeting. This is the regular business meeting for Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. The time right now is 7:00 PM. I'm sorry, the time here shows a little different, but we're going to go with what is on our phones. I'm going to ask that Sheri please call the roll.
Council members present and establishing a quorum, Foulter, Beaumont, Walker, Gamble, Fisher.
Thank you very much. I recall that Councilmember Hanford said that he would not be here this evening at last week's council meeting. I don't remember that Councilmember Scarborough made a similar statement. So we will consider Councilmember Hanford's absence here as excused unless there's objection. And then we will note for the record when Councilmember Scarborough enters chambers. Councilmember Scarborough was listed as doing the pledge of allegiance. I'm going to go ahead and ask myself if I will lead us in the pledge tonight because I don't think I've seen my name there for a while. I forgot. Yes, I will. Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands by its own liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. All right. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Check to see if there are any, anybody has put their names down to speak. Thank you very much. All right, we have, I have my reading glasses with me tonight. Jessica Quadri here tonight to speak. I'm going to go ahead and invite you up. I do have a script to read. What I'll say is this, I will save you the reading of the script if you keep it within three minutes. Thank you. If you, at the end of three minutes, I'll need to cut you off. So if you want to keep it to three minutes, if you could please state your name and then your association with the city, like I live in Monroe or I have a business in Monroe. And Sheri's working on getting the timer up, so. Should I go ahead and do it on my, on my phone? Okay. Sorry. Why don't you go ahead and state your name for the record and your association, and I will let you know when we are at time.
Okay. My name is Jessica Quadri, and I own Miss Quadri's Bakery in Monroe and the Hidden Room Events in Monroe. I also live here. Okay. It says, hello, I'm Jessica Quadri, the owner of Miss Quadri's Bakery and the Hidden Events in Monroe. My vision for opening my establishment was to create a vibrant community hub that encourages local engagement and draws visitors to the downtown area. When applying for my license through the state, there were no options for event spaces, so I selected office space and office rental. I enter, I enter, I'm sorry, interpreted that as having an intended use of office space with the necessary use of renting out the office space for events and meetings. I communicated that to the city, and the space was approved for meetings. Every birthday, wedding, and vendor meeting involves my bakery, involves planning, decorating, services. The attendees often dine on Main Street or at local eateries with their entire parties before heading home. I was completely transparent about my plans even before applying for my state business license or receiving my city permits. I also informed them that my business name was already established and included events in it, even if that may not be the focus of my business. Seven months later, an email from the city notified me that the events I was hosting were not allowed and directed me to stop them immediately. I am still unclear what defines a meeting versus an event. I believe that I have done nothing wrong and have been completely transparent and honest from the beginning. I was unable to ask questions since the only person I had communicated with in office previously was the one who filed a complaint according to city public records. My business has been closed for nearly 11 weeks, which has significantly impacted my family with no income. The prospect of sustaining the location past October is uncertain, especially after canceling numerous meetings with potential clients and vendors during what should be our peak season. However, our financial future hangs in the balance awaiting the downtown zoning codes updates, zoning code updates. The zoning code updates, as written, will allow my business to continue to hold events, open my doors again, and bring people downtown. Until they are passed, I am unclear if I am allowed to proceed in this space with any business. The city of Monroe has essentially closed my business without any way to appeal. Please do not delay in making these changes happen for our downtown area. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak tonight? I'm going to, just a second, let me go ahead and reset the clock. Okay. Go ahead and state your name and association with the city.
I'm Sheri Novak. I am a resident of the city in the downtown area. And again, I just want to encourage you guys, if we could do whatever we can do to try to keep our downtown full and vibrant. And I walk down there twice a day. There's always broken windows in those vacant buildings. You know, the more stores we have, the better it is for all of us, for tax base, for our community, for our city, for people like me who like to walk and not drive places. So whatever we can do to make it easier and help our really small businesses who really can't survive long periods of time getting through a lot of steps. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see anybody else in the audience who would speak this evening, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be the consent agenda. Turn to the council. Councilmember Beaumont, you put your glasses on first.
Well, golly, I move to approve the consent agenda as provided in the packet.
We have a motion from Councilmember Beaumont, a second from Councilmember Fisher. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes 5-0. I almost said abstentions. All right. Unfinished business. This is item number 6.1, and we have Liam McCorkle here to talk about automated traffic safety cameras. Good evening, Liam. It is bring your own mic, and if you go pick up gunner tights, get your own silverware or use your own fingers.
Thank you, and thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I will keep my remarks tonight brief. So as requested by council, at the September 24th meeting, a public hearing was held regarding draft ordinance 002024, however, draft ordinance 0062024 was not adopted by council. Council directed the mayor and staff to bring back a new ordinance for consideration to fully repeal ordinance 0062012. That is included in your agenda packets tonight. As requested, draft ordinance number 0072024 would repeal ordinance number 0062012, which would fully eliminate the requirement to hold an advisory vote on any ordinance that authorizes the use of automated ticketing cameras. Just to once again clarify, adoption of ordinance number 0072024 does not necessitate that the city must move forward in implementing an automated traffic safety camera program. And with that very brief remark, there is a potential action that could be taken to council tonight with a first reading, and I will hand it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. And I usually announce for the record a little bit more, but I was just on the agenda. I'll go ahead and announce that this is unfinished business. This is related to ordinance number 0072024 repealing ordinance 0062012. I turn to the council. Any questions or a motion? Councilmember Gamble, go ahead.
Oh, it came on.
It's because Kirk's not here.
It wasn't me that said that. So I know we've talked about this several times, and I know I think it was on when I wasn't here, and I caught up on that, and then I read the bill today. I still don't understand why we're repealing this. I mean, I was here when we were, when we put that in, and it was because it was so important to the public to at least have that data point for the council on where the general population. We still can make the decision. Nothing stops us. That's just a data point. And I've heard everybody stands, well, you know, hey, we shouldn't have to take an advisory vote to make a decision, and we need to make a decision. We're elected officials to make a decision. Absolutely. 100%. That's never what the intent was. I was involved in that. The whole idea was to make sure that we were saying, okay, hey, this is something that's important to the community at that time. And so let's put something in place so that if we want to take actions in the future, at least we have it in the cycle to get the temperature of at least where everybody's thoughts are on it. That's what it was, and give people an opportunity to voice their opinion. So it doesn't stop us from continuing to, you know, to go down the path, and again, my reason was just to have that data point. So I don't understand why we've turned it into a political thing. It seems like to me. It's not from my perspective, and I just don't like the optics. It's, we put it in there so that we could hear from the public, so it was a data point. So I'll be voting in the negative. No, that's it.
Thank you. Any other questions for cash, for staff? Any other questions for staff or a motion? Councilmember Foulter.
There we go. I move to accept as first reading ordinance 0072024 repealing ordinance 0062012, eliminating the requirement for an advisory vote on an ordinance authorizing the use of automatic ticketing cameras, providing perseverance and establishing effective date.
We have a motion from Councilmember Foulter, a second from Councilmember Fisher for the action that is identified on the slide above on the screens. Any discussion on the motion? Saying none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes 4-1. Thank you, everybody. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda, and that would be council member reports. I'm going to go ahead and start off with Councilmember Gamble, since his microphone's working this evening.
No report.
Thank you, Ed. All right. And because it really isn't Councilmember Gamble and Councilmember Scarborough's microphone, it doesn't work, but it's Councilmember Fisher. So Councilmember Fisher, you're next. See if, we'll see if your microphone works. Jason, you need to get down there and help.
I got it. Second try.
Second try. Nice. Go ahead.
Did AJ or Affordable Housing Association meeting, which was interesting, and I will be coming a little bit more involved with that, with some discussions that I'm going to have with some of the folks there later this week. And then, since I'm first, I can steal the chamber luncheon. Also attended the chamber luncheon today, which was great. Several of us were there. Lot of great discussions, a lot of, of good people meeting and talking about where we want to go and some concerns. And it was, it was great. And thanks, Avery, for the, for the food. It was awesome as well. Daddy take too much.
Thank you. Councilmember Foulter.
Well, last week I had a community transit board meeting, and guess what? Bears are going down. Surprise. And so watch for that in a bus near you. Other than that, yes, I was also at the chamber meeting today. And as always, it was nice to have so many community members who really just want to talk about what would benefit Monroe and always a good time.
All right. Thank you very much. Councilmember Walker.
What, the one press? Attended the Affordable Housing Alliance meeting with Councilmember Fisher. Chris Collier is the, the lead staff member for the Affordable Housing Alliance. He has offered a few times to present any kind of data to the city council. So I would like to ask Mayor that staff reach out to him or communicate with him to get a presentation on Monroe's affordable housing supplier availability and touch on tools or approaches that we might have in order to help with that. He's a really good resource, and I, I don't see why I wouldn't hear some of his research on our city. Chamber lunch was great. Just always want to reiterate that we are so lucky to have an active chamber like we do. The leadership is, is great. The businesses in our city are just fantastic. There's so much love and appreciation for our community there, and we're just really lucky. And then appreciated the legislative update from Representatives Gainer and Steele, and Representative Eslick was in attendance. And that is all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. And I'm pretty certain that we've had Chris Collier here before. I'll have staff follow up and just find out when the last time it was that he was here and see about having him come out. So thank you. Councilmember Beaumont.
Thank you. I also was at the chamber lunch today, and yeah, I echo Councilmember Walker's comments. It's just a great opportunity. You know, Carolyn Eslick was there today and just lots of people that we care about and that care about our community. Kirk Pearson was just a great sort of touch base with a lot of people and very worthwhile. So it was great to be there with my fellow council members. I just got the Snow and Sky Adventure Guide, took a look through that, and what a well-done publication. Really chock full of great info about Monroe specifically, a lot of great advertising for businesses in our community and just an extremely well-done publication. And, you know, that's what I do for a living, and I was just page after page. It was like, wow, this is really well done. So that is going out to everybody and is a great sort of marketing piece and tourism piece for Sky Valley in Monroe. Just really well done. So enjoyed that very much. Teresa Willard and I were interviewed by King Five News today, and the reason why is because the buck houses are potentially slated for demolition on the 15th for one house and the 30th for the other. So we'll be saying goodbye to our old friends, and it's very, very sad, but we feel like we've really given it everything we had to try and relocate them. So they came out and did a really great story. It aired at 5:00 and again at 6:30, and will be available for anyone that wants to take a look at it. But we sort of did a different angle on what's happening here, and it ended up being sort of a historic look at the city, what we're doing for historic preservation, and ultimately that that piece of property is going to be the site of 16 new dwellings. So it's increasing the housing that's available in that location, and that's a good thing, and the gentrification of that neighborhood. And so progress, although it is bittersweet to lose Hattie and Harriet, and that's, as you all know, a cause that's been near and dear to my heart, it will also be a modernization and something positive going into that space. And that's how we're looking at it, and that's kind of the spin of the story, in addition to just looking at the buildings that we have saved in town. So pretty pleased with how it turned out. And last but not least, I just wanted to, our parks are just so beautiful. There was a middle school cross-country meet last night at Sky River Park, and the high school always goes down and helps. And now I'm a high school coach. And, you know, Mike and staff, everyone that takes care of our beautiful parks, over and over again, these visiting schools and teams were just in awe of that beautiful park. And it's just a matter of pride for all of us in Monroe and all the athletes who are down there to just show off that park. And starting next year, and Mike, you and I can talk about this, we are going back there for our high school meets. We haven't done that in a number of years because of some issues, and we all agree that we need to get back down there and have high school down there, too. So it's just another moment of pride, you know, for all of us to be down there enjoying that beautiful park. So thanks so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. We now have the Human Services, August and September 2024 work report from Caitlin Harrigan, who's online. Good evening, Caitlin.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council, for having me. I am here to present the Human Services, August and September, work report. This is included in your packet and a few highlights. There's lots of great photos this time in our work report, some of them from our Poverty 101 event, which was a very successful event that we were very excited about. And also just a few other events that we attended during August and September. So does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Any questions? No. Thank you very much for the update. We go ahead and turn now to the mic, Carol, for an update from Parks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council members. So in your packet is the September report for Parks and Rec, and I'm just going to keep the meeting moving along. But I will just point out that we have this tourism data section that will be, you know, we'll be updating it regularly, and there's some fascinating information. There's an attachment on there. So if you have any questions, I probably don't have any answers tonight, but now get ahold of me, and, and I'd be happy to explain, you know, what some of this data means to us, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mike? All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. Thanks, Mike. And that item would be the City Administrator Report, extended agenda with Administrator Night.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Looking forward to next Tuesday, October 15th. We will be canceling the Finance and Human Resources Committee meeting. We will be having a regular study session. We have a proclamation thanking David Hose for the City Hall mural public hearing, and it'll be our first public hearing of three on the 2025-2026 biennial budget, including the revenue projections, and then an ordinance for downtown commercial amendments with Amy Bright, and then the City Administrator Reports, Mayor's Report, and a discussion item on the 2044 draft comprehensive plan. Going forward then to Tuesday, the 22nd, we will be having a P3 committee meeting to talk about the Trails Master Plan with Ben Swanson and Phase One Code Amendments to the, to the Unified Development Code with Leanne Barr. And then, for the good of the order, there will be a discussion of the Children's Outdoor Bill of Rights with Councilmember Walker. At 7:00 PM, we'll have a regular business meeting, and we will be doing a presentation on the biennial budget and the six-year capital facilities plan. We will have the second hearing on the 2025-2026 biennial budget, including the revenue projections and property taxes, and then several items on the consent agenda, including the ordinance amending the downtown commercial regulations and suspending utility shut-offs for November and December. Then, under Department Reports, we have Finance, HR, and IT, Community Development, Police, Public Works, and Economic Development, and then a discussion on the draft 2044 comprehensive plan updates.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions on the extended agenda? Okay. And can we go back one slide, please? So I wanted to bring council's attention to the announcements and presentations. For the proclamation, as you all are aware, David Hose has done a lot in our community with murals. He's also done a mural for City Hall. One of the things that we need to do is we need to, to close out his contract with the mural is we need to formally accept it. I thought that a good way to do that would be this joint statement or joint proclamation of the council and the mayor just thanking him while at the same time satisfying that technical requirement of accepting the artwork. So we will do that. We're going to send out a copy of the joint proclamation sometime this week for council to see. Our interest is to make certain that all the council members have the ability to sign the document. If you're not going to be here on Tuesday next week, and I think everybody's going to be here, perhaps we can arrange a time for you to come in on Thursday or Friday this week to sign it, or Monday to sign it, just so that we have it all ready to go for next week. So the thought is that, I think he's going to have, Liam, he's going to have the mural here. Is that correct? Okay. Our hope is that perhaps the mural will be here so that you can all see it and then also do the proclamation in a photo with it. So we will see what we can do with that, but please watch your email. And if you have any concerns about the way the joint proclamation is put together, you can go ahead and communicate with Liam and copy me and Deborah just as we normally do. Any questions on that? All right. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and continue with the City Administrator Report with Administrator Night, unless you want Ben to update.
No, I can, I could do this portion as well. And I did want to just take an opportunity to do a couple of shout-outs first. I wanted to thank Ben just for covering for me last week while I was on vacation. And then also to Liam and to Greg Framer, our interim finance director, for all of the work that they've been doing in putting together the mayor's recommended budget. It was a heavy lift for everybody, but I think council will be really pleased with the document as we begin to move forward and begin to talk about and share with you and the community members the mayor's recommended budget. A couple of just upcoming items. I think you may have seen several of these before. The Lodging Track Grant applications are due tomorrow, so we've really been working hard to get the word out, and I know that we've already received quite a few applications. The Orca Recovery Day is Saturday, this, next Saturday, October 19th, from 10:00 to 1:00 PM at Sky Combers River Park. That's being hosted by the City of Monroe and the Snohomish Conservation District. That looks like a really fun event in town just at the end of October. And then the tour of the City Hall project with City Council. That does look like it's confirmed for Tuesday, October 29th at 4:00 PM. So more information to come as we get closer to that date.
Thank you very much. Any questions on the Administrator Report? Please, please note the tour of City Hall project Tuesday, October 29th at 4:00 PM. That's different than what we normally do. It's not at 5:30 or 6:00. And if you're not able to make it, I'm looking at Councilmember Beaumont, please reach out to me, and we'll see if there's a way that we can accommodate a tour, if that would be okay, Deborah and Jacob. I saw the look on your face, and we'll try to figure this out. Yes, Councilmember Gamble? Okay. Okay. If you wanted to do a tour, go ahead and reach out to me and Deborah, and we'll see what we can organize as well. Yeah. Cool. Thank you. All right. Any, any other questions on that? All right. Thank you. So Monroe this week, volume 10, edition 39, is in your packets for your consideration. And just a couple of updates from me. One, staff has done an excellent job putting together our binder, our budget binder for this year. Please note that the new logo is right there. Say, ooh, ah. Thank you. I appreciate that. I really appreciate all the work that staff has done this year, especially being down one of, you know, down a position and having Greg in there, working in an interim position to make certain that we can put this together. We will be discussing this over the next couple council meetings, and I look forward to your thoughts and your questions. Staff will be here to respond to them. And as you'll note in there, we, just like I told you we would do earlier this year, have brought you first a balanced budget. Second, the budget is not using any of the contingencies, so it's consistent with the way that I have been doing things here in terms of recommending a budget to you as your mayor since we, and that's within alignment for the policies that you, the council, has adopted. And what else? Right. And then the second part of it is, as you're aware, there's a levy lid lift for the community to consider approving that would allow us to hire a couple additional positions, parks and public safety related. And so there will be an amendment that will be brought forward. That amendment. Yeah, I see that there already must be an error, and I'm guessing, I think I know what it is, given what I just think I saw circled. So the amendment will be for council's consideration in the event that the community votes in favor of the levy lid lift. So as I said before, I'm not relying on that to bring you the budget, but we will have an amendment for council to consider adopting after, after the election, if it comes off in favor. Any questions about the budget? Okay. The other thing, too, I just want to, to follow through with a couple of the things that I've been working on over the last week. First, at the Public Safety Committee last week, there was some discussion over the entrance to the police lobby. On Wednesday, I came and met with PD. And then on Friday, I came and met with PD and Public Works to talk with them about how we can accommodate a more stable place for the public to come to PD. If they, if something happens during regular business hours, we will be establishing a new entrance off of Village Way. That was better than keeping, keeping it where it is right now because you can't get there. And we couldn't come up with a temporary solution even in the semi-near term because we will be, we will need to take out the parking lot and install a new parking lot essentially. And during that time, if we were to open things or put out a temporary building, there'd be the possibility that we would have to move things a couple of times, and just having one stable location that's safe, where people can see what's going on, and you're out of the weather, seemed like a good approach to do things. So we will be putting signage out, directing people if they're coming to PD during regular business hours over to where the court currently is and where we have a front desk that is staffed. Does anybody have any questions about that? All right. Also, it was mentioned some concern about the RFQ and whether or not there is funding in the budget. There is funding in the budget, and you'll see that in There is funding in the budget, and you'll see that in the, in the binder, and if you have any questions about it, please let us know. If I remember correctly, it was $200,000. If that's not enough, council will have the ability to, to do an amendment or something along those lines to accommodate additional cost, but $200,000 sounded like a good amount for an RFQ to continue working on the next phase of the City Hall campus redevelopment that we're doing, and that part being a section that involves a police facility. Any questions about that? All right, thank you. I think that's all that I have to report this evening. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or good jokes for me? But I'm, thank you very much. With that, if there is no objection, we are adjourned, and there is no objection, so we are adjourned. Have a great evening, everybody, a great week, and thank you so much for your service.